Conference will now be recorded.
She can't get back up, can she?
Well, call to order the regular November 17th, 2025 council meeting order at 6:30 PM. All rise of the pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
The only one I have is Citizen of the Month, Mayor's Report, but it's not really an addition.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion, accept the agenda with one addition? So move. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Norman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed. Motion carried. Move right into the Mayor's Report. Citizen of the Month recognition for the November, 2025. I'll turn it over to Council Norman.
I chose Kathy Ward for this month's Citizen of the Year. She did a lot of teaching at the school and helped a lot of kids. And a lot of them really appreciated having her and she made a change in their life. And she worked a bunch with outdoor school, keeping it going as long as they could. And especially out at Wilkerson where it was not as easy as going to up Keasy. And then she worked with a bunch of foreign exchange students to help best with a little culture from other countries, which doesn't hurt the kids to learn. And then the other big one was getting the senior trip to Disneyland going and keeping it going. And it takes a lot of work to keep that organized and going because they do a bunch of fundraising. So I present this to Kathy Ward. They gotta take our picture, Kathy. Thank you.
Congratulations, Kathy.
Kathy, do you know how many foreign exchange students?
Personally?
Yeah.
I have 43 children.
Wow.
From 21 winters.
That's wow.
But hundreds of kids at other people's places.
How many years have you been teaching?
I taught 19.
19. And you're still subbing, aren't you?
I haven't since COVID just because I'm lazy. There's kids like that still at school. No. I don't want to go to jail.
There's another generation.
Yeah, there is. But yeah, I still have my sub license.
Yeah.
I just have some kids with my grandkids.
Yeah, there you go.
It was funny because I told him I was trying to get an award. One of them got Student of the Month this month.
Okay.
One of your grandkids did too. And I said, well, aren't you going to go down with me and take my picture like I took yours? And he goes, what would you get an award for? All you do is take us to school and pick us up.
Yes, I know.
That is not true. You make a huge difference in a lot of kids' lives, including Sarah's.
Well, thank you.
Hey, we miss you running the score clock.
Oh, no, I did that for a few years.
Yeah.
I can do books.
Thank you for all you do for our community, Kathy. For those grandkids. Thank you, Donald.
You're welcome.
Excellent choice.
Yeah, for sure.
I had to bribe her.
I believe it.
Yeah, she didn't want to come. So it took a lot of talking and finally she said, okay.
Doesn't look like any presentations tonight. Council committee meeting reports. None opened from part. Okay. Topics on the floor. Doesn't look like that either. Consent agenda for acceptance. Public Works Committee Minutes for August 2025 and Parks Committee Meeting Minutes for September 2025.
I move to approve the consent.
So move.
Acceptance. Sorry.
Okay. So move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Weller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Consent agenda for approval. City Council Meeting Minutes for November 3rd, 2025.
I move to approve the consent agenda for approval.
Okay.
Wanted to get that.
Thank you. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Webb. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Any unfinished business tonight? Okay. Moving right into new business. Staff report revisited. Not Street Meet Property. Any discussions or questions? What do I do?
So yeah, I walked the property. Kind of a little surprised by the wetland delineations in there, but guess it is what it is. But it looks like it's pretty planable ground to me for my stick some experimentals in there to just see how well they do. I noticed the grass doesn't seem to grow real high other than it was kind of a shorter grass. It hasn't been mowed. I could tell. Just only in the one corners read canary grass in, which is usually problematic. So yeah, I think it's pretty planable track. Get a few trees in experimental to see how they do. Okay, we're going to have to do something a little more extensive to bust the sawed open to get them to go or not. I don't know. But I think they might grow.
Well, I will say that I'm running into implanting in pasture land is mice.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of mortality just because of mice. That would be an issue. Did you see this, the map, this one where they?
I know.
AKS, was it AKS? Yeah. They went in and did a study on that. And that's, to me, it looks like it's the whole, almost the whole piece.
Yeah. Yeah, but walking, I couldn't see any differentiation there. There was only that little shrub part that protruded into here.
When I rented that house right next to that, that, it used to fill up with water. I know that and maybe.
I go out front, yeah.
It may be early enough where it hasn't, haven't got enough. According to Ed, I talked to Ed and he said it's, part of the problem is there's no drainage there anymore. Apparently that their drain that was there has been either deteriorated or it's not working like it used to, I guess. And I did ask Ed if it was a.
Who's Ed? Oh, okay. I was not, I wasn't following. I was like, Ed, who?
He's a property adjacent.
Yeah. And he, he wasn't interested in that property at all, so.
It's pretty much sat for 18 years. They tried to, they had a manufactured home and a brand new one, almost all set up. And then the 2000 flood hit, or 7 flood hit. Pretty much been vacant since then.
Yeah. So. Was that Meads that put that in?
Yep. Steve did it.
So I guess my question would be, what would be the asset to the city? I mean, is it just another piece that we'd have to maintain?
No. So because it's undeveloped, the only requirement to maintain is five feet off the right of way of Knott Street. So that's really all you'd have to mow by code. And you'd have to do that probably twice a year for fire danger, like we have to do on some of the buyout lots. So there's endless possibilities. You could use it to remove fill if we were going to do impervious surface to expand Knott Street. You could plant it with trees. You could use it as drainage. You could, you know, engineer drainage there that hooked to that wetland. You could, you know, design it. So there's lots of possibilities of what the city could do with it if they had it down the line, should those things come to fruition.
Has a legal reviewed this?
Yeah. Yeah. And he'd, he'd be more involved in making sure that the deed documents, if you guys chose to take it, that the deed documents were all legitimate before they were filed and everything.
Anything else to say?
Unless you have something, go ahead. If not, I do.
You go ahead. Cause I was just going to move to.
I would be, unless we dug that out, I wouldn't want to put any more water in there because that one manufactured home out front, their grudge usually gets filled with water when we get a bunch of rain. And if we ran more water in there, we might flood it more.
No, I just meant, I didn't mean you would just pipe it there. I meant you would like either remove fill to, to, you know what I'm saying, to create a deficit to do Knott Street. Because if we cover the culvert of Knott, right, the ditch right now, we're going to need impervious service. We're going to have to do a push, removing fill out of the flood plain. So that's where you could create another pooling or ponding area using it. That's what I meant by the mitigation of, not necessarily that we would direct storm there because Knott Street's already a great system for diverting storm.
Right.
The river, so.
Yeah. Cause if I remember right, when they put the sewer in is when they screwed up the drainage and never fixed it.
When they put which sewer in?
When they did Riverside back in the 70s.
Oh, okay.
That's, Ed said, made comment on that too.
Yeah. Back when they, yeah, that side didn't have sewer. And then when they put city sewer in over there, down.
Something got.
47 and all those streets got tore up to put sewer in.
And they created a area where it couldn't get away.
No, I think they tore up, they saw the paracotta drainage and didn't think nothing of it.
Yeah. That's what I mean. Like they undid something that was working.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's weird because on the one map, I think it shows, so the weird little strip that comes from the highway.
Oh, yeah.
Is kind of like platted right of way. So if you wanted to, you know, do something, you could, I don't know what you would do. Right? I'm just like.
Right.
Thinking forward. If there was some use to do something there, there's the potential. I mean.
You mean from Knott Street?
No, it's like a weird little strip.
Oh, from 47?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I see it comes up along with it.
Yeah, it's like.
Peach is that? 10?
Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah, 10.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to pull it up to double check what I'm saying here. The internet's a little slow.
Yeah, that fencing in the back of that's a little confused.
Yeah, but that's, that's kind of normal. People build over stuff and then you're like, that's not actually yours. And they're like.
Oh, it's kind of juts out there in them trees.
Yeah.
South line.
Oh, come on. Yeah, it doesn't have a name.
Yeah.
Looking, does it say unnamed on your thing?
That's fine.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were asking me.
No, it's, it's the page after page 15. So I presume.
Yeah. So if you ever, you know, for some reason wanted to do, take some sort of diversion of stormwater or something, that is also adjacent to that property. I don't know exactly how that would work. I'm not an engineer, but there is the option of that.
That's about the only thing good I saw out of it because I don't think we could get enough trees that would make very much money because, and get an equipment in there to do it. In a small amount of timber that would be there, a person would charge quite a bit to harvest it and get it out.
Yeah.
Because it's such a small job.
You could partner with the school and have their forestry class practice on a very small area that actually really could. Presuming in 35 years or 40 years that they still have there, right?
Right.
The school would have to be able to purchase some equipment because now it's all mechanical. You know, it's not hand cut like it used to be. It's 99% is all mechanical logging now.
Instead of $1,000, I saw you buy a half a million dollar processor.
Is there any further discussion? Can I make a motion?
Any further discussion?
I guess.
We don't have to mow it and upkeep it.
There's really not a downside.
Yeah.
I mean, other than it comes off the tax rolls, why not work?
Fair land tax.
They're probably not paying much right now. Pretty problematic to put a house in there.
Yeah, you'd have some bucks wrapped up in, the way I understand it, you would.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. But anywhere in the flood plain, you have to.
Yeah.
Pretty much. Or foundations or, I mean, the only, if someone wanted to build a house on like stilts, that's how you'd get around the flood plain. You know, you'd have your parking area, kind of like the log cabin on Jefferson.
No.
Right at Anderson, you know, that's how you could get around the volumetrics, that's how a builder could get around that stuff, right? But yeah.
1033 a year or for this year anyway.
Yeah. Sorry. You're quicker than me. I was pulling it up.
It was in the.
Oh.
It was in the papers that you're supposed to read, right?
And if I remember right, they tried to put in that manufactured home was over there where it says plot five. I don't think it was back here on this other piece. I think it was.
What map are you on, Donald?
Google Earth. They don't have.
Bottom.
On the bottom.
Close to the end.
Oh.
11117, 2025. That must have been the date.
It's page 39.
Nice colored picture here.
39.
Yeah, that's where that home was, Donald.
Yeah, so. I guess if, if we had something more there that it connected to, I would see it being more value to us. But to get rid of that ditch on Knott Street, that's probably what we're going to need to have to do. If Knott Street gets finished building out and probably even some of the other, have to haul material out of, that we could haul material out of there to make our offset. That's about the only thing I see it's good for.
Option, yeah.
Yeah. You can hold that there. A lot of that groundwater is going to go to, kind of help some of the people right around it, you know, for the rainwater.
Yeah. That house for plot six is their grudge. It fills up all the time with water. It gets real wet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does Mido, that plot, like where plot two is out in there? I mean, I am looking. That's for sale too. That's where the water really sits in there? Or somebody else got that?
No, that's, no, the square in front.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now let me pull it up.
Okay. Find out on 47 and sign.
Yeah.
It looks similar to the one.
That's same property. Same property.
Last I knew, I think Robin Bassett had it.
Oh, geez, yeah.
They're pulling it up. Any other discussion on it?
So what you're saying is the only asset there is to that is being able to attain more water.
Potentially, or in the future, somebody might decide that they want to put something on stilts there and then the city would be able to sell.
Could sell.
Property.
But that's a big if. I mean, for me personally, I wouldn't want to build there anymore than I'd want to build down to my, my own field. I mean.
I, yeah, but people are weird. That didn't come out quite right. There are people who think that that kind of thing is very cool. And the opportunity to get property at a relatively inexpensive price that would benefit the city because we, the city would get the money, then they could do what they want to do because, oh, look at Renonia, I want to move there. And I could build my modernistic, within planning commission acceptance, home on stilts. I don't think there's a downside to it. I mean, we will benefit in some way or another with that property over the years. And I apologize to every person listening that I've just called weird.
Well, I personally think we have enough property to take care of. Well, I don't think the city's in the business of real estate.
Well, but I, I'm sorry.
That's my opinion.
I just thought that I heard that the only thing we're required, the city is required to do is mow five feet of it. There's no other.
Yeah. The first five feet off Knott Street of that driveway is the only requirement by code to do anything to it. Cause it's undeveloped. There's undeveloped parcels all over town that the only place they have to maintain is the right, the adjacent to the right of way.
Like Aura?
Yeah. And it's the reason we don't, like the big field on Heather, we only mow the front part of that, except for at fire danger in August, we usually mow it once. But that's whatever acres Nancy Schaumberg's old property there. It's a lot of acres there that we don't mow on a regular to keep it like, we don't keep it like a lawn. And if we did, I mean, I think if trees aren't the thing, Knott Street's development, we'll, we'll struggle to find the give and take without something like that piece of property. They, we probably wouldn't be able to, maybe we'd be able to use a buyout close in that area to it, but that's not a given because the buyouts have their own FEMA restrictions, so.
So it sounds like there is a reason to.
Well, I think it's definitely an option that helps us if we go to cover the culvert and widen Knott Street. We already know we would be widening it towards curls side. So you would be covering that culvert. That's where the sidewalk would go because you wouldn't want to, with the way the utilities are in there, you wouldn't want to put the other infrastructure over the house sides. Also because some of the houses are built close from old setback rules, you know, you wouldn't want to be like a sidewalk right in front of some of those houses. So you'd put the sidewalk on the other side by the LDS and Robbs, but that would mean covering that culvert, which would mean needing a push of give and take in the flood plain.
We'd have to go up, all the way up towards the church there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then the flood plain. So it's going to be a considerable amount.
Yeah.
Ground.
Cause the sidewalk stops at the corner by Schrader's there, you know, the city sidewalk.
Right.
Down that corner of Nickerson.
Sidewalk will go clear to.
It would go to Nickerson. Yeah, it would go to Nickerson Ave. Is that the Ave, the first one? Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's where you'd connect it and widen it. And the other thing is, is like when we push back on the, them not encroaching on Knott for the trailhead, Schmeckel owns 57 acres back there that in some future look of Renonia could be changed from currently it's his own light industrial, but it could be changed into residential. And then you'd need a wider thoroughfare, you'd need the full 60 to have in and out for those homes if there's homes there someday. So it's kind of a forward look of it, right? This could benefit us in the future. If we had a piece of property, we could manhandle to benefit us to put the road how we need it in. That's what I think one of the elements in here that we were talking about was.
That's right there.
Yeah. The other, the other side of that property would be, they'd have to get like access from, I think it's Dennis's maybe, who abuts them on the backside of that 57 acres. It'd be a new road in off of the highway versus not being a 60 foot already existing, basically. The other side, a road doesn't exist, so.
Do you know approximately what distance that culvert is that would, would have to be covered?
Um, no, I'd have to measure it.
Probably.
I think.
900 feet, probably. Almost that much.
Yeah.
I think 400 yards up there.
Cause you would start there by that first house and go clear to the church.
Yeah.
Cause there's two culverts.
Yeah, so it's.
But.
700 to Robbs gravel from the corner. So let me move and re-measure the rest of it.
Pass that.
So. So it's like 1300 feet, 13 to 1500 feet. So it's like thirteen hundred feet, thirteen to fifteen hundred feet.
Pretty good stretch.
I mean, Robbs luckily, his is, it's culverted by his gravel, so I guess I need to take his off, hold on there. There's a section there that's not opposed here. So closer to twelve fifty?
So whatever volume that amounts to, you have to exchange it.
Take out, yeah.
Yeah, you have to have a push in the floodplain. Whatever fill you're bringing in, you have to remove that much fill. You can't create an imbalance. So that's kinda how most people, if they, or like with development, we've been able to count, you know, when we removed the stadium, when we removed the, um, the dirt from the borrow site, we were able to count that for putting in the skate park, right? See, it's like a game, you keep tallies of how many loads went out, how many came in, and you, if anyone ever questions us, we could prove that. And that's homeowners, we require it, you know. Okay, you're bringing in this much yardage, when you're building a house, how are you also getting it out of there? And then making sure they take it actually out of the floodplain, they don't take it down the street to, I mean, we've caught people, some people taking it down weed, like back to Fairway, and we're like, oh, no, you gotta pick that stuff up and get it out of here, because it's just gonna raise the water when the water comes again for everyone. So that's what you're fighting with that. For the most part, people can do what they wanna do and play that game without causing increase for everyone.
Is this, so, go ahead, man. Is this something that we have to act on right away? I mean, what's our time?
Yeah. Tabled it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to yea or nay it, and then move on it to whatever the next thing is.
What staff recommendation, Josette?
We don't have one.
Okay.
We're letting you guys, we want you guys to, you're the decider, so. We're just telling you what potentials there are. You guys see what detriments do you think there are, and?
I'm just trying to weigh different aspects of it, cause it's been, you know, sitting there for eighteen years, and I think he's had it on the market for a long time, and nobody wants to buy it, and, I mean, as far as the city's selling it, I, I mean, I don't know there either. I mean, I'm trying to, yeah, it, it's kind of a. But what are the negatives, Mr. Mayor? I mean, that's how I, I come to this, negatives and what's the positives? Well, that's what I'm trying to establish, too.
Yeah.
I mean, if we, if we take ownership and just sit on it forever, it's just kind of a neutral.
Yeah.
It's not a cost, we ain't gaining anything. Or we take dirt out of there and make a nice frog pond in there.
Except, question, I thought that if we, the city took ownership of it, we could remove it from the usable lands.
Buildable lands inventory.
It's already restricted, is what Ben said.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's already not really affecting it.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it's not, cause the, before he did the wetland delineation, the wetland map showed the majority of it being wetland, so it wasn't counted as like a whole bunch of home sites or something.
Okay.
There might be some benefit, but.
Negligible, yeah.
I would think if we would take it, we'd probably have to hang on to it for the Knott Street development, rather than try to sell it, because then we're back to, now we gotta find a place we can dig out dirt, so we can do the Knott Street project.
Yeah. Well, or wait until, see if you need it, and if you don't need it, then you sell it. I mean, there's tons of options, right?
The ultimate, the end product of what we're gonna do with the product, property doesn't need to be decided when this motion, we can make, kick that can down the road, so to speak, but it still is an option for the Knott Street pro, problem.
Yeah.
Potential problem. And the alternative is, you know, what else would you do for Knott Street if you didn't have this as an easily and readily available option?
Yeah.
So it is, if you did take that property for that purpose, you still have the cost of removing the, the dirt.
That would be part of the project cost. When you're gonna remove that dirt somewhere, right, or you're going to engineer the project somehow, and that would just be rolled into a project cost.
Good.
I think what would be nice about that, it's right there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you're not moving equipment down here by the lagoon to dig out.
Right.
You know, whoever's doing the street project could run over there and take a hundred loads of dirt out and not have to move equipment around.
Yeah. And if you, so just to be clear, if you take this property, because the current council doesn't tie the future councils to anything, you're just taking it. You're not, you don't have to say what your, gonna, future use is, you're not, you don't have to say, oh, we won't sell it, or we would sell it, you just, just acquiring it, and that's it. And then the council, when, and if the time comes for it to be sold or used for not, the council sitting up there at the time would go to staff and say, how do we do this project? Staff would say, well, you own this property right here, oh, you could do this, and they'd just make that decision then, if they're gonna use it, or whatever they're gonna do with it.
And I totally understand that, Josette, selling real estate before having my license here. I wouldn't wanna say anything negative or pro or cons about it, in, in case we listed it, you know, and.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So. Yeah. Well, we had some good discussion. And.
Just that you make a recommendation?
Nope.
No.
He's wanting us.
Yeah.
Down our own two legs.
I get that.
And, and you're, you're way.
Well, yeah, you're way more familiar with these kind of things.
I am, but it's your guys' decision as the governing body, right? I'm just your staff that pulls off, you, you have assets and I pull off projects and with the assets you have, so I'm just here to do whatever you say to do.
Yeah. My only reason to vote for it would be to do the Knott Street project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
But we can't.
I know, but I'm just, other than that, I don't think we need it, but that would help us be able to jump right over, do something without having to do a bunch of extra paperwork. Or find another location.
So, you ready for a motion? Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion that the city of Vernonia, Vernonia. Let's have. You mean, Knott Street proposed? Is there a second?
I will step up in second.
Seconded by Councilman Armond. Would you call the roll, please, Steph?
Um, sure. Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Harmon?
Aye.
Okay. Committee recommendation, Memorial Bench. It's forty-one. Has everyone reviewed this? Request? I have a question. Where did they kind of pick a location? Would it be on the east end of the lake, kinda where Wells?
No, it's on page forty-three, the, um,
Oh, okay.
There's a X marks the spot.
Oh, okay.
We did check that there's, that's not the area that has the leak or an area near the, where we had the leak, where we would think we'd have to trowel in, um, and bench, there is a bench in that corner, but it's a kind of city bench, and it's not very, it's not as pretty as this one, but it's far enough away where they won't look like they're competing with each other.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is that, you know, is that where a lot of maple trees, you probably know?
There's not very many, if you look at, like, go on Google Earth and you look at where those lily pads are in the lake on the picture, and you line up, there's not, there's maple trees on this side and on this side, but there's, and, and on the backside of the trail, but there's not trees right where they wanna put it, if that makes sense.
Okay.
There's trees that potentially, and side, side note, we talked about, there are some maples there that we need to have dropped on the backside of the trail that are just not, they're, they're aged out. They come out before they fall and ruin other stuff, but nothing real close to this spot.
And it's a spot there that is known fishing right there. Yeah. It's just.
Picnic table right there now.
There's a picnic table and then that little city bench.
Yeah.
Right.
And then there's a little clump of something, and then it's the next open spot towards the east of that.
Yeah.
I, I looked at the other day there after we talked about. I like the idea, and I love the bench. Same. Same fabricator that did the Gwen's benches. Does a good job. One more thing, Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead. So, and I think, but when people come in and wanna do these, it's with the understanding that the city's not going to, if it gets destroyed or something.
They even have it there in their letter.
Yeah.
That the city's not responsible for any destruction or damage, and personally paying for the construction, and will be responsible for the upkeep of it. So it'll be similar to the cemetery benches, when they degrade, we contact the family and say, would you like to replace the bench? Moving it. And then the family has the option of replacing it where it was, or just take it out if something happens.
There are a lot of history there with Memorial, so I, I really like it. Yes, well.
I make a motion that we move forward with the memorial bench.
Is there a second? Well, second. Seconded by Counselor Webb, all those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
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 None opposed, motion carried. This is from the departments. Ordinances resolution. Correspondence.
It's printed for you. Did you hand that out already?
Yeah, it's not really printed.
Well, we had a pretty good dinner last week over in Rainier, and took a little bit to find it.
Where was it?
At, at the Eagles Lodge.
Oh.
But they gave us the address to City Hall.
Oh, no.
But we were both smelling around, it's like, I think the restaurant's down the other side of the train tracks, if I remember right. And then there was about four different doors to get into the place. We finally made it, and.
It was a test.
There was a little confusion when I went to register. They didn't have our names, but anyway, the food was good, and it was a pretty good meeting. Unfortunately, Betsy was the key speaker, but she forgot about it, so.
Oh, no.
Mayor Jerry had to find, I think he got Darcy Edwards to speak in her place, but it was a good meeting, so. Anyway, that's all the correspondence I have. We do not have a city admin report at night, so items from the mayor and council. The city crew pulled the inlets for the light pump and we winterized it. Another year done. How many gallons did you figure? Oh, God, I did figure it out. You did? I did. Was it a hundred? Can we guess? A hun, yeah, you guys wanna guess?
No, cause you already started saying stuff.
Yeah. I think it was a hundred and sixty-one million gallons. Wow, I wouldn't guess that much. It was nine, over nine thousand hours on the pump. I was surprised it was that many this year.
How, how does that compare to other years?
Uh, it, it was probably number two since we've been running it. Yeah. Leaks, uh, lakes holding, pretty much? Yeah, I'll go measure it again. The last time we measured it, when the lake was pretty full, we were back up about forty gallons a minute. Well, I talked to Josette about, you know, maybe the next time, I know Watts had a few ideas of maybe putting a trench full pit run in there, cause he says rodents, they don't, they hit rock, they turn around. I mean, I'd try that on the next stab, if there's a next stab, I don't know, I think we'll wait till it gets back up pretty high before we try to hit it again. Until we don't get there.
The critters are the primary.
Well, I know when we dug it out the last time, we were cutting, he, he cut down through, and that's clay, and all of a sudden there'd be a round hole, about that big around. Yeah, so it sure looked like a rodent hole, muskrat or something. I haven't seen any muskrats in it, so I think the Eagles must be keeping them down.
Too many fishermen.
Yeah. Okay, anybody up for it?
You know, I just wanna say, um, I appreciate the letter from Barb. For those of you who've never been to Community Engagement Night, they're kind of fun. I got to go to several, and I highly recommend it. I would go to this one, but I am going to be at a previous engagement, so. Sorry.
Okay. Well, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish the council a very happy Thanksgiving, and the staff.
Thanks.
And I'm thankful for the staff, and in fact, I came in tonight with a, kind of a different mindset about the meed property, and through some more information about the Knott Street, and I kinda changed my mind, so thank you, staff, and we appreciate what you do year, year round for us, and, and I wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving too, so.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Action item summary tonight?
Well, we'll just move forward with the deed documents for the meed property, and then let the applicant know that the memorial bench has been approved, and then we will be closed Thursday and Friday of next week, and I won't be here tomorrow, cause I got summoned for jury duty.
You did? They called, your number came?
Called my number. I gotta be there at eight forty-five. First time I ever had to be there.
Oh, wow.
Man, you don't get a free pass, huh? Cause I got, you know, a lot summoned, but noticed for like federal in Portland, and one of the things is if you're an elected official, you opt out.
But I'm just an employee, I'm not elected.
Yeah, yeah, you're not.
On once, but not in. On once, but not anymore.
Yeah.
Because for federal grand jury, that was not an option.
Really?
Which was fine. I was very happy to do it, but.
That was federal, wasn't it?
It was federal, it's federal court off. Yeah.
So I'm hoping.
Elected officials.
There you go.
Keep that in mind.
Okay.
I've heard back from them.
Well. There's nothing else. I'll adjourn the meeting at seven twenty. Meeting adjourned.